The first item on the agenda is the oath of office for our new planning board members.
Okay, Kim Curtis.
Come down here. Don't you come down there? Or you're coming up here.
No, he's coming up.
I can come down here. It's not a problem.
I'm a little rusty.
I'll just tell you what I need to do. Okay. I can put my hand on that. You can hold that. You can hold that for me now? All right. So I, Kim Curtis, do solemnly affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and the laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the Indian Trails Planning Board, so help me God.
I, Kim Sandoval, do solemnly affirm that I will support and maintain the Constitution and laws of the United States, the Constitution and laws of North Carolina, not inconsistent therewith, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of my office as a member of the Indian Trails Planning Board, so help me God.
Next, we have the approval of minutes from the previous meetings from March 19th. Oh, do we need to determine a quorum first, or is that already been done?
Yes, ma'am.
Quorum is present. The quorum is present. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes from our previous meetings?
I so move.
Second.
Approved. Onto new business. Good evening.
Good evening. Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I think I need to raise this microphone up too close. Let me just turn this on. There it is. Okay. Well, first of all, I'm happy to see all of you after a three-month break, right? And happy to be joined by new members. So welcome. We look forward to working with you all. Our first case for tonight, well, let me talk about the first two cases for tonight. Both of them are zoning map amendments. We also refer to them as straight rezonings or conventional rezonings. These types of petitions do not require concept plans or site plans, and special conditions cannot be added with the approval decision. Therefore, it's important to consider, as we're reviewing these petitions, the land use potential and compatibility of the proposed zoning district with the surrounding land uses, the surrounding zoning, and future plans. And that's what we're going to try and display and present to you for your consideration. So our first case, ZM 2024-0071 Younts Business Park. Let's move on. This zoning request is to rezone two parcels to GBD. They're located on Manus Drive between Brown Lane and Woodhaven Lane in the Rosemary Park area. Together, they form 0.47 acres of vacant wooded land. And the current zoning is residential, specifically SF1, single-family, low-density. The intent behind the zoning request is to basically complete the assemblage or the set of parcels, commercially-zoned parcels, required to accommodate a commercial development. The applicant is Cameron Helms with Love Mill Farms LLC. So let's dive in. Let's look at first the aerial map to review some of the surrounding land uses. The subject parcels are contained within the red square in the middle of the map. These properties don't have road frontage to a proper road, but Manus Drive is the platted right-of-way that serves as access to these parcels. Any development that's proposed here and approved, and if they wanted to get access through Manus Drive, would require that they develop that road. But as of right now, it's not a developed road. It's just a six-to-eight-foot gravel path. And we'll see some pictures of that in a few slides. The parcels contained in the yellow shape are also owned by the applicant, Mr. Cameron Helms. This group of parcels, along with the two parcels that we're considering tonight, are that intended site or that location for a future commercial development. The area to the west, the area that's contained by the orange lines where we see the Metro Atlanta Christian Academy, that is, those properties are owned by First Baptist Church of Indian Trail. They're part of the Metro Atlanta Christian Academy campus. And this area, as the aerials show, currently features a football field, and plans are underway to construct a soccer field. And we will show you a screenshot of that site plan in the next slide. Towards the east, across the intersection of Younts Road and Brown Lane, we find Union Prep Academy. That's contained in the bright green shape. And not too far from there, at the bottom right corner of the aerial map, we see Trails Dynasty Mini Golf. So both academy schools on both west and east are considered institutional civic land uses, and Trails Dynasty Mini Golf is a commercial land use. And then finally, scattered around the area are residential properties. Most of them are on Younts Road or Brown Lane. However, there are three single-family homes on Manus Drive, one of which is directly adjacent to the subject properties. And that is, looking at the aerial map on the left side, or the northwest property line of those properties. Okay. Let's move on to the next slide. This is that screenshot that we were discussing of the proposed soccer field and parking that's going to be adjacent to Manus Drive directly across the subject properties for this case. And so that's just to give us a sense of that institutional expansion that will take place near that area. Next, let's show some street view photos. There's not that many because most of the area is wooded vacant area. But this is the front-left corner of the front side of the property. And there we can see that gravel path that's supposed to be that road, Manus Drive. And then here we see another angle. This is now looking at that residence, 6618 Manus Drive, that is currently occupied. But that gives us a sense of what that area looks like. Moving on to zoning. The subject properties are zoned residential SF1, much like most of the other properties in the surrounding area. Everything that you see in yellow represents residential current zoning. But note, at the middle of the map, these dark blue parcels in the center, these parcels are currently zoned GBD, general business district. And like we mentioned before, the intent of rezoning these two parcels is to essentially expand or extend this commercial zone, this GBD zone. It's important to kind of go back to June 2023 when these 10 parcels were first rezoned and ask, you know, why? Why was it approved when it's in the middle of residential? Well, there's good reasons for that that convinced planning board and town council to approve that. Number one, it was noted that these parcels were in between existing institutional land uses and near an existing commercial land use. Number two, it was noted that Younts Road, which used to be a residential local road, has now morphed or become a collector road with higher traffic volumes. And then number three, reason number three, the residential development in the Rosemary Park area has been slow and challenging. Add to the list the lack of road infrastructure, and it was apparent that future development in this area would lean more towards commercial and that that original request back in June 2023 was consistent with all those factors. Now, looking at the future land use map and considering the recommendations of the comprehensive plan, when we look at this map, that's where we can see that contradictory recommendation, right? We see that it's saying that the recommendation is for this area to remain low-density residential. However, as it was noted back in June 2023, and we reiterate that opinion, planning staff is of the opinion that this area needs to be reevaluated and updated future recommendations redrawn due to those challenges and constraints of residential development that we mentioned earlier. However, the comp plan, when it describes this general area that it identifies as the US 74 West Corridor, it states that future development is anticipated to be retail and office development along with employment uses with supporting retail. The area then has the potential to become a sub-regional activity center where land uses will be oriented towards collector streets such as Younts Road. So in line with this prediction, future transportation plans call for Younts Road to become a four-lane Activity Center Boulevard. And if we look at this next slide, that is a screenshot or a snippet of the future transportation map in that area, in that corridor. And we can see this dashed red line represents that potential for Younts Road eventually connecting with Plyler Road and becoming that four-lane Activity Center Boulevard. And so we can see that there in the map. The location of the subject properties are shown there with that red arrow. So in summary, we've noted that the requested zoning is general business district. We've noted that it's consistent with the immediate adjacent properties. We noted that there was already general business in the area. We noted that surrounding land uses include a mixture of institutional. We have both academies in that area, near that intersection of Brown Lane and Younts Road. And we have that one commercial land use, the Dynasty Trails. There's also upcoming expansions, as we talked about, that soccer field. We noted that the obstacles for residential development require that we reevaluate the future land use recommendations for that area. And we also pointed out that the comprehensive plan anticipates retail and employment development along Younts Road. Therefore, the request for GBD is generally consistent with existing conditions and future plans. So the requested action that we have before you is here on the screen. And if you have any questions, we're here to answer those questions. The applicant is not here today, so.
Do we have any public comments for this?
I do not have anybody signed up at this time.
Okay. Do we have any questions from the board members about the presentation?
I think just as a matter of curiosity, I know we've talked about Rosemary Park before and the difficulty of providing infrastructure there. Is that going to be an issue in this area that we're rezoning?
You're referring to those streets that we identified that are adjacent to the parcels that are the intended site, right?
Yeah.
Well, when that applicant comes forward with a site plan, that's when the town and the engineering staff will assess the type of access that they're requesting. And that it's at that point that they can require developing those streets to town standards.
Okay. Do we know when the last residential structure was developed in this general area?
I recall some that were in the Rosemary Park area, like in the Kennedy Avenue or Kennedy Drive. And that was maybe in early 2023. But we haven't seen that many developments in that area for the reason of those constraints and challenges in that area.
Yeah, I think it makes more sense to have it zoned along the same zoning as the adjacent parcels.
Are you making a motion?
I'm waiting to see if anybody else has a comment. Okay, I move to recommend approval of zoning map amendment ZM 2024-0071 Younts Business Park as presented.
I second the motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously.
Okay.
Next on the agenda, we have ZM 2024-0074.
Okay. This case titled 5908 Old Monroe Road. This is also a zoning map amendment or a straight rezoning. The zoning request is to rezone one parcel to NBD, Neighborhood Business District. It's located on 5908 Old Monroe Road. It's 0.85 acres of cleared land. The home was recently demolished. And the current zoning is residential SF1. One detail that I apologize that I omitted in my report is that it's also within the Neighborhood Services Activity Center overlay. So that is an important detail that was missed in the report. The intent for this rezoning request is to basically assist with the marketing to businesses for a future commercial development in that parcel. The applicant is Thomas Auer from Auer Real Estate Development Company, and the property owner is Nolan Ellens from NFM Properties LLC. So starting with our aerial map and looking at those surrounding land uses, like I said, the subject property is currently vacant. Significant clearing as part of the Old Monroe widening project has also been completed in the area. And so as you drive by that area, it looks open and vacant. But there are a few active land uses in the area. For example, behind the subject properties, there are two residences. And across the road, there's one residence, and that's represented in this map by those yellow shapes. Across the street, there is Pinnacle Self-Storage, and that's an industrial land use. Down the street, heading towards Sun Valley Activity Center, about 700 feet away, we find the Sagecroft Townhomes neighborhood. And along with it is a vast open area in between the neighborhood and Old Monroe Road. That's represented in the map as this blue area. Now, it's important, and I want to note at this time, that this area is planned to become a commercial village. And we'll discuss more about that when we talk about zoning. So a few images of the surrounding area, street view perspective. This is the front of the property. When I went out there, they were still hauling away stuff from the demolition. So we see all the work vehicles. This is looking northwest on Old Monroe Road, and we can see some of that clearing from NCDOT. Looking southeast on Old Monroe Road, off to the distance on the right, we can see that Sagecroft Townhomes. Looking across the road to Pinnacle Storage. And then this is a street view photo looking at the nearby residents directly behind this property. And this is 400 feet, setback 400 feet from Old Monroe Road. Looking at the current zoning, the subject property, as we mentioned, is zoned residential SF1. And we can see that this is consistent with the surrounding properties towards the west. Even the properties that don't have a color on this map, that's because these properties are part of Union County, and they have Union County zoning. However, towards the north and west, we can see existing light industrial and commercial zoning. Light industrial is represented by that pink shade. And then that commercial zoning, that open area that we mentioned earlier in front of Sagecroft Townhomes, that's currently zoned Neighborhood Business District. And that was part of a special use permit back in 2007. We also refer to it as conditional zoning. The plan was to include the development of a commercial village in this area, and that's expected to develop in the future years. And so we can see that in the light blue shaded area. All of that is intended to be that commercial village. We're going to show you what that could look like from the concept plan that was submitted with the special use permit. We can see that here. The green area is the townhomes that exist now. The yellow area is what was presented as that commercial village that would go there. And the red parcel on the top of that map is those subject properties, just so we can get a sense of how close or their relationship with the NBD. Moving on to future land use map. You know, taking into consideration this proposed commercial village from the Sagecroft project and its proximity to the actively developing Sun Valley Subregional Activity Center, the comp plan designates this area as a Neighborhood Services Activity Center and recommends mixed uses as the optimal future land use for all remaining vacant land on Old Monroe Road. And we can see that here in this map. All those parcels shaded in this pink color, that is indicating or designating mixed-use future land use recommendations. And then we can better understand this recommendation from the comp plan when we see a map showing how close this Sagecroft Commercial Village, shown inside the smaller green circle on the top left of this map. We can see how close it is in its proximity to the Sun Valley Subregional Activity Center. This image is not in your report. I just added it last minute. Okay. And the subject property is shown right there through that red arrow. Okay. So, in summary, the requested zoning is NBD. That's consistent with the surrounding zoning districts. The current land setting is mostly vacant open land, but the area is transitioning due to the Old Monroe Road widening project. Commercial development is anticipated due to that Sagecroft Village project. And the future land use map recommends mixed use for the area. So we can say that the existing conditions and future plans support this request. And this is the requested action before you. If you have any questions, we are here.
Thank you. Do we have any public comments?
I do not have anybody signed up at this time.
Okay. Any questions from the board about the proposed project? All right, a motion that we approve as presented, CZ 2024-0074.
Madam Chairman, I'll make a motion that ZM 2024-0074 be approved.
Second. All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes unanimously. All right. Thank you. Onto the next item on the agenda, CZ 2014-003M, the shops at Hanfield.
That'll be me. Good evening, planning board. My name is Tyler. I am one of the senior planners. And hopefully, I will do the best to convey all this information to you as easy as possible. So you saw the M behind the designation. That means it's a modification to an existing approval. That's why it has an old project number of 2014. And the CZ component means that it was conditionally rezoned. So a lot of times, that's a project that is trying to get some alleviation from UDA requirements or add additional uses, whatever the case may be. And so they voluntarily consent or agree to certain conditions in order to try and receive approval. So the zoning request is to modify a portion of the 2014 conditional zoning plan and conditions. The overall site was originally 21.84 acres, but this is only going to affect 2.805 acres of the site. The zoning is currently conditional zoning, general business district, or CZ GBD. And that plan is to remain unchanged. And it falls within a subregional activity center overlay, or OSERAC. We love our, all of our acronyms. And as previously, you'll see in one of the attachments, it references OVC. And that's a Village Center Overlay, which is what it was previously called as part of the 2013 comprehensive plan. So the intent of this request, there's two different elements to it. The first one is to allow for drive-through facilities on a portion of the properties along the Wesley Chapel Stouts Road. And then the second, which came in a little bit later when we were talking with the applicant, is to allow the use of a cigar shop, which is currently classified under lane use type tobacco and vape operations. We don't split up the difference. So the applicant is the Motor Group, Inc., Tom Crouch, project manager. He's in attendance and would like to speak after I finish my presentation. And the owner is Liquid Management LLC and BF Union Properties, LOP. Contact Tom Crouch and David Burr. So here is the aerial view of the subject properties. You can see that they are outlined in yellow. It is in the Sun Valley area. So you can see the Publix directly to the right of the properties. A little bit to the southeast, you can see some of what would be Culvers, Slim Chickens, the dental office. Across the street to the northwest is going to be your Sun Valley Theaters, Wendy's, Taco Bell, things of that nature. And at the south portion of the intersection, Sun Valley High School. Current zoning, like I said, the properties are zoned CZ GBD. They were part of that 2014 approval. So pretty much everything that's going to be in that dashed GBD along that side of the intersection was part of that original approval. And then you can see some buy right, general business district outside of that, as well as some low-density, single-family. And then to the far north of Oak, which is the conditional zoning, multifamily residential. Future land use map, like I mentioned earlier, it's part of the Subregional Activity Center overlay. You cannot see that on this map because it extends too far outside of it. And I still want it to give some clarity as far as where the property was in relation to it. But I promise you, it does fall inside of that overlay, which is to provide additional mixed uses as part of the comp plan recommendations. And you can see, as highlighted, the properties in yellow, that it is proposed mixed-use future land use recommendations. And you can see institutional is going to be all of the Sun Valley aspect. And then across the street for the movie theaters, Wendy's, Taco Bell, stuff like that is just strictly commercial. Analysis and overview. So the original 2014 approval was to develop the site for use as commercial shopping center and related improvements. A portion of the 21.84-acre original site plan that was approved as Hanfield Shopping Center and associated shops and restaurants, as well as a portion of the 2.805-acre site that's part of this request, has already went through site plan approval and has been built out. This is the last remaining portion of that original approval that still is trying to be built out. So general business district as the base zoning. So general business district as the base zoning district and the associated conditional district, which is that CZ designation, will not change as part of this request, only some of the minor concept plan elements and applicable conditions for just that 2.8 acre portion of the site. So here are some street view images. Hosway didn't tell me that he was changing the format to go for the full screen, but I'm kind of jealous of it now. To the left, you can see East Coast Wings, which is already established business. In the center is proposed restaurant with drive-through. And then to the right, not really pictured, is Sherwin-Williams, which is already built. This is going to be a side profile, looking into the property. You can see Sherwin-Williams off in the distance, that's just the side of their building. One thing that I did want to note, and it's part of the reason associated with this request while planning is even entertaining it, is the Old Monroe widening, as Hosway prefaced with some of his cases, is impacting everything out in this area. Originally, there was going to be some design criteria along the Old Monroe and Old Charlotte Highway Wesley Chapel Stouts intersection that Publix originally had some pushback with due to how it was going to affect their bottom line. And as part of the redesign, this traffic circle that is impacting a portion of these properties is kind of a byproduct of it. And so it's kind of hard to see with this photo. I promise it's there. Feel free to go out in the field and you can verify it as well. What I've highlighted in that yellow circle, the proposed edge of right-of-way stake, that is going to be part of the traffic circle that NC DOT is proposing with this project. And then, like I said, you can see Sherwin-Williams off in the distance, and I'll explain a little later why that is significant in relation to this request. Here's another view, I'm actually standing inside the Sherwin-Williams parking lot now, looking the opposite way, and you can see East Coast Wings off in the distance, and then where the proposed restaurant with drive-through would be. Got a lot going on in here, but I didn't want to give you 30 different slides of photos on the area. To the far left, you can barely see it, but there's East Coast Wings far in the background with a little bit different color of the building. Then in the foreground, you can see the Sherwin-Williams building, as well as what's one of the suites that's being proposed for the second element, which is the proposed cigar shop. In the middle photo, this is taken from a different angle, looking back towards Sherwin-Williams, you can see Wendy's off in the distance on the other side of Wesley Chapel Stouts, you can see the proposed Sherwin-Williams, and you can see a little bit of where that adjacent suite is that the proposed cigar shop is going to go, as well as in the foreground where the proposed restaurant with drive-through is. To the far right, this is just showing that some of the exterior boundaries or the perimeter of the site has already been established, it's tied in with the shopping center for the shops at Hanfield. Not pictured, if you were out onsite, to the left would be the East Coast Wings, and off in the distance, shielded by some of the trees, is Publix in the background. This is looking from Publix parking lot towards the rear of the site, and you can see, like I said, it's grown up, but they have a mixture of street trees that were already established, as well as some shrubs. So project elements, like I said, there's going to be two of them. One is to allow for those drive-through facilities on the above-mentioned parcels, which were originally not permitted to have drive-through facilities as part of the original approval, which was ordinance 209. And once I show you the concept plan from the original document, you can kind of see To explain it before I get there, part of the recommendations in the original village center overlay was to provide a more walkable area, buildings pushed up to the roadways, and part of that eliminates any parking in the front, as well as drive-through facilities in the front. And so you can see that East Coast Wings is pulled up to the Wesley Chapel Stouts right-of-way, I think within like 10 to 15 feet. Same thing with the Sherwin-Williams that was just built, it was pulled up to the road with the parking in the rear, 10 to 15 feet. The second element is, like I said, to allow the use of a cigar shop classified as land use type tobacco and vape operations on these properties, which is currently not permitted due to distance separation restrictions in the UDO Chapter 7230.010B. Those distance separation restrictions were implemented in March of 2024. There were previous restrictions prior to that in at least 2021, but it was only 500 feet, and it was typically in relation to just schools. Aside from the concept plan changing for this portion of the approved site, certain conditions associated with this portion of the site may be modified, added, or removed as part of this request, and I'll show that a little later on as far as what's actually changing. If the modification is approved and Moser Group submits for site plan review, any and all applicable UDO requirements, not otherwise specified, in the conditions must be met. So the request of project element number one, the drive-through facilities component, here's an excerpt from the approved rezoning ordinance 209. I reference conditions 2B and 2C as part of the original approval. I'm not going to read the very top, but it is specifying just the parcels in question. One of them has since been subdivided further due to tax purposes, but it's specifically for the properties that we're talking about. And so it says, "Frontage buildings shall be constructed facing Wesley Chapel Stouts Road in orientation consistent with Hanfield Village Building Number Four," which is the East Coast Wings. "No parking areas and/or driveways shall be located between the building and Wesley Chapel Stouts Road, and the main reason we're here, drive-through facilities shall not be permitted on these parcels." And so when we're looking at any kind of site plan review as a staff, and we see a proposal come in, we look at the zoning, and if we see there's any kind of SUP for special use permit or a conditional use district, whatever all the language was back in the day, the acronyms, essentially it means there's conditions associated with the project that we as staff need to look out for. Sometimes those can be reduction and setbacks, sometimes those can be additional amenities, access, whatever the case may be. Requested project element number two, as I mentioned, this came later on after the original application was submitted during conversations with staff, but it's for cigar shop use. Like I mentioned earlier, there are separation requirements currently built into the UDO that were just approved as of March of 2024, that specify the distance that there should be between institutional uses, religious uses, other uses for tobacco and vape operations, body piercings, tattoo, electronic gaming. All of those are bundled into this section of the UDO for what we call specific use standards. And in this case, as you can read, I'm trying to find the exact portion, but it's 2,000 feet is what it's supposed to be from any of those uses, and that is like uses, as well as, like I said, those religious or institutional uses. As of right now, I know there are three like uses in the area. One of them is right on the corner of Wesley Chapel Stouts and Old Charlotte Highway, it's the Two Brothers Tobacco. That's within 200 feet. They actually came in prior to the 2021 minimum distance restrictions of 500 feet, and so they made it by about two months before the code changed.
When you say 200 feet from?
From building to building.
From the school, right?
No, 200 feet from the proposed cigar shop use to the vape shop. From the school, they are just shy of 500 feet, approximately. Don't hold me to that exactly. And then the other two like uses are on the theater side and some of those shopping centers. So there's a lot more separation between them. And so you can see that subsection B number two, and this would tie in with planning board, something to consider, that Town Council may consider modifications to the established criteria referenced in the above section through a conditional zoning district. This property has already went through a conditional zoning, so it would just be modifying the existing conditions to allow for the proposed use. And so proximity and/or visibility from the other uses, including dwelling units, churches, mosques, synagogues, temples, place of worship, public or private schools, daycares, nurseries, et cetera. Those proximity requirements can be, or restrictions can be reduced by y'all and Town Council, should you choose. Originally, we discussed this going through text amendment options separate from this application, but it's not something that staff felt comfortable doing with overall for the entire jurisdiction or corporate limits of the town, because then that would be, like I said, reducing that 2,000 feet that we just implemented, going back down to a very small buffer distance. The only other thing that was offered was them going through the conditional rezoning process, which they've already went through once back in 2014. And so that brings us to this modification, adding in that second project element. So they are the same, but they are different. Project element one, project element two are both shown in the conditions that are being proposed and will be shown a little bit later on, but they were two separate elements that were just brought to us at once. The current request of concept plan, to the top of the site, you can see proposed tree mitigation planting from tree removal during the site construction for the Sherwin-Williams. That was already something that Sherwin-Williams was going to originally do as part of their approval and their CO. But part of the mitigation was going to be where the proposed roundabout is currently being built. So, and a little bit later, when I show the Sherwin-Williams site plan, you will see that, hey, they didn't actually put in all the trees they were supposed to lined along Wesley Chapel Stouts. Well, it's because we didn't want them to get ripped up in a year or two. So they're showing the mitigation from that. Then you can see the call out for the proposed restaurant with drive-through facilities. There's no indoor seating, it's strictly outdoor patio. And then moving down towards the bottom left, you can see that's the existing Sherwin-Williams building. There are two suites in it, one Sherwin-Williams is currently occupying, the second is vacant right now, and that's where they're proposing that a portion of that existing building be used for the cigar shop use. To the right, you can see where there are the existing internal private drives. Part of the original approval for ordinance 209, condition 11, stated that there would be access given for the internal components as relatively shown on the original site or concept plan. And so we plan on holding Publix to that, even if they don't want to. And then I called out some just further south existing internal private drives. Here's a little more zoomed in area of the proposed concept plan. You can see some of the pedestrian access going to the Wesley Chapel Stouts. You can clearly see how that roundabout is impacting the proposed properties. And so professionally, if the roundabout wasn't coming in, I don't think staff would be entertaining allowing for the drive-through use component, because we would want all the buildings built to Wesley Chapel and be harmonious as part of the overall development. However, like I showed in one of the previous photos, you can see how far that right-of-way stake went in, and that's just to the edge of the sidewalk that's being shown. So it completely changes the aspect and dynamic of the remainder of the overall site and the original intent of the approval back in 2014. One good thing, even though there was some mitigation that was going to have to be done, they're showing that mitigation on the front portion to try and help screen and offset some of those components for the drive-through facility, and staff thought that was a fair And you can see they'll also have access going through on the south side to the Sherwin-Williams facility, same owner. Here's a zoomed in portion of the Sherwin-Williams, and outlined in red is the relative location of the cigar shop use. And then not shown on this, but on the other side of that private drive is where that other vape shop, the Two Brothers Tobacco, is located. Existing site conditions, this is just one little snippet of part of the approved site plan for the Sherwin-Williams store, in that you can actually see where they partitioned off the suites. And you can see a portion of where they were supposed to have continued trees planted in the area, but weren't able to do so due to that roundabout. Here's the overall 2014 approved concept plan that was one of the exhibits in that approval. Like I said, building four is going to be that top left one that the East Coast Wings is housed in. The subject properties are outlined in red just below that. And then whether you knew it or not, some of the other properties along Old Charlotte Highway, the Culvers, the dentist office, Slim Chickens, those are drive-through facilities as well that were part of the original approval, but they just happened to not be on Wesley Chapel Stouts Road, and so they were permitted. So it's not going to be anything out of the ordinary now for what people are already aware of. And then, of course, you can see the big shopping center is Publix. Here's a zoomed in portion of just the properties in question on the 2014 approval, and it literally mentions that these are part of the original 2014 approval, but that they are subject to going through a concept plan later on on their own. And you can see where they've already done on the southern portion, the existing tie-in to the Sherwin-Williams site, and then to the rear of the site, relative location where the restaurant with drive-through would also be tying in. So based on the current request, staff is proposing the following conditions. I tried to make it as simple as possible rather than listing out every single condition that's remaining the same and/or changing. So conditions that are not changing- So conditions that are not changing whatsoever as part of this request, simple, they'll say no change. Ones that are being added are going to be highlighted and in blue. And then revisions to the original approval, they'll be in red. And so one of the main ones, like I said, 2B. Right now, it originally had no parking areas and/or driveways. Shall be located between the building and Wesley Chapel Stouts Road. We're changing that to parking areas or driveways proposed to be located between the buildings must be approved by the planning director. That's relatively consistent with a lot of the language that's already in our U D O. Most of the time it says at the discretion of the planning director. But this just gives Brandy the authority to approve it. And this would be the only site that it would be affecting. The rest of the changes for condition two, there's, there's no changes on D E or F. There's no changes on the building setbacks in general. Permitted uses, number four. We're proposing adding the language in for a cigar shop may be permitted on these properties, removing the minimum distance requirement specified in U D O chapter 7230.010B. We added in the no LED illuminated signs shall be allowed along the windows of the store. Staff added that in. I trust Tom and Moser Group that their intent is for a high-end cigar shop slash lounge separate from a vape store or anything else you might see out in the area. However, since we don't have a separate land use type classification for cigar shop, it is tied in with tobacco and vape operations. And so theoretically, if the cigar shop happens to move out, bad business or whatever, then a vape shop could be allowed to come in. The biggest nuisance that we have with vape shops is tied to code enforcement with the LED illumination and bright light shining all over the place and distractions and stuff like that. The rest of the conditions, five through 15, no changes. And so in summary, like I said, the zoning is going to stay conditional zoning, general business district within that subregional activity center overlay. Proposed changes to the concept plan and conditions are to allow for the drive-through facilities on a portion of the properties along Wesley Chapel Stouts Road. And then allow for the use of cigar shop classified under land use type tobacco and vape operations. The comprehensive plan anticipates further development of mixed use in this area. The request is generally consistent, reasonable, and in the public interest as it promotes the following comprehensive plan goals for community engagement, land using housing goals one and four, as well as economic goal one. And I'm not going to bore y'all, those are in y'all's staff report. And so the requested action is a recommendation for conditional zoning modification 2014 003M. Either a motion to recommend approval as presented, motion to recommend approval with revised conditions, or to recommend denial as presented. I'm open for any questions y'all have. Like I said, Tom Crouch with Moser Group would like to say a few words too. So if y'all could just hold questions until he does it, he may be able to answer some of them. I'm gonna go back to.
If you go to the aerial, that'd be great. Good evening, my name is Tom Crouch, I'm here representing the Moser Group. I'm here to answer a couple of questions about you might have about this project. I'm joined tonight by one of my colleagues, this is Chappie Ray. The reason she is so much better than I am is because she brings snacks. So what we're proposing here is an Andes frozen custard. And it wouldn't be right for us to propose something and not let you try it. So she has a cooler with dry ice, we went and got some Andes about 30 minutes ago. So we have vanilla, we have chocolate, we have their concrete, which is basically their Blizzard type. And we have spoons for you and you just tell us what flavor you'd like and we'd love for you to try it. Because truly, we love it and that's why we're bringing it here. So feel free to say what's, what you, flavor you'd like and we'd love to share it with you.
Maybe afterwards.
Maybe afterwards, alright.
We have enough for everyone, so if anyone else would like some, feel free. But we'll, we'll share that with you after. As Tyler did a great job of showing you kind of the overview of this. We didn't realize we weren't going to be allowed to do a drive-through here. Because if you look at this aerial, to your north, you'll see the Taco Bell, which is a drive-through on Wesley Chapel Stouts Road. Moving a little to your left, you'll see the Wendy's, which is also a drive-through on Wesley Chapel Stouts Road directly across our property. So when we kind of went through this process and realized we couldn't do drive-throughs, we were kind of shocked, to be honest with you. Because again, you have Culvers and Slim Chickens on the bottom. And so we, we hear the, the reasoning behind having that street facing. But as Tyler mentioned, we do have a traffic circle coming in there that will really impact the usability and, and impact how you position that building close to the road there. And then as he mentioned, we are requesting the use for a cigar shop. What we're actually requesting is the cigar shop directly across 74, next to the IHOP and the urgent care. They're actually relocating and opening a second store here for a number of reasons. And so when I talked to Brandy about this, she didn't have a, like you said, difference between vape shops and the cigar shops. So this will be a high-end cigar shop, we're not going to have neon signs. We welcome you to go tour and go look in the existing cigar shop. You can see the cigars there, the average price is about $8, $6, somewhere in that range. So it is a lot higher end and we won't have any of those neons or anything like that. And I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
No questions from the board?
Did you have a question, sorry?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other public comments?
Public comments at this time?
Okay. Any questions from the board members to staff?
So the cigar shop will be how many feet from Sun Valley High School?
Approximately 500.
500 feet, which is, and so the new, so the new conditions were 2,000 feet or the new ordinance specified 2,000 feet, correct?
Correct, yeah. So one of the biggest differences, back in 2021, the code read just 500 feet from educational uses, I believe. Not other like uses. And so one of the issues that we ended up running into, no offense to vape shops, but since we deal with them from a code enforcement standpoint, a lot with the illuminated signs or other complaints from residents, they end up becoming more of a nuisance. We legally have to allow them somewhere.
Sure.
But we can add additional restrictions, that way they're not conglomerating in one location. And so that's where those specific use standards come in to provide additional distance. One, not only from each other, but then two, from less intense uses such as.
Yeah, and I understand, I understand that. Unfortunately, with this, because that's where my concern is, I don't have a problem with the, the drive-through or anything like that. It's the cigar shop is where my concern is because, and it's nothing against the cigar shop at all, because I, I mean, that would be great. But it does allow for a vape shop, it could be in the future. So that, that's why my concern is, is what, what it opens up and not, you know, not what it is right now. But there's no guarantees because of what is allowed, that that could not become, you know, could not be located there.
Yeah, so I tried to, I tried to spell out in the conditions cigar shop as a designation, but.
Well, but yes, my question is.
So the only, the only way that that would change in the future would be some sort of U D O text amendment presented either by staff or brought up at the request of somebody else to separate the difference between cigar versus tobacco.
But as it states now, if we approved element two, that would, that would be permissible though. It include, is inclusive of all of that.
Correct.
Correct, okay, that's, I just want to make, be clear on that.
I was just gonna say one thing, the Moser Group manages several hundred different tenants. And if you look at our whole portfolio, we don't have any vape shops because we don't believe in that. And so we'd be 100% open to doing with this condition restricting specifically vape, vape shops to ever be allowed in here. I'm not sure exactly how you'd write that in there, but we would, we'd be open to that.
Well, the other issue too, that we look at in another communities that have looked at restrictions on tobacco shops, cigars, what, no matter what it is, is the, you know, there's a certain promotion just by the store being there. The element of tobacco being there. And it's kind of like, oh, if it's okay for adults, it's okay for kids. I mean, that's one of the, the issues is safety and promotion for a kid's future.
Well, and that's why, that's why the concern is, it does open up the, it does allow for vape shops and things like that. As it's written now.
Yeah, and so, and by our current code, it's, it's hard to split those hairs and meet those same goals as in, you know, the health and safety side. Because you still have an establishment promoting tobacco.
Right, yeah.
And it is what it is.
Yeah, and I'm not questioning your, your, your intents, the intention there and, and values that, that you have. It's just, it does, it does open us up to that possibility. If the Moser Group, you know, sold it to, to another development group, it allows for that. They may not have the same standards, they may not have the same, you know, same goals. That's, that's why it's my concern, that, that piece of it, the other parts, I'm all good for that.
Tom, I, I do appreciate, you know, Moser Group willing to restrict it to that. I think just in terms to where staff is right now, we can only go based on how the code is currently. And so for us, it doesn't matter cigar, tobacco, vape, like it's, it's all one use. So for us to try and limit a use, it would be eliminating that, that entire one. The only other thing that I'll want to bring up, at least for planning board, it is y'all's decision, staff is just here to give information, to provide y'all an informed decision, but keep in mind precedent. I believe Tom's intent is, is good. I think it's going to be a cigar shop, like they mentioned, I don't think it's going to be a vape component. I don't think staff in general is, is worried about that aspect. I just, I am concerned looking at like future. If, if y'all have the justification for it, I'm fine with that, but just make sure the justification is good. Because y'all might have somebody in the future, two brothers, that wants to open it up on the other side of Sun Valley. Same thing they're dealing with, distance restrictions. And at that point, they would probably have to go through a full conditional rezoning. But unless there's something that is specified specifically in the code that says no vape, only cigar or whatever, just, just keep that in mind.
I have a question, is it possible for us to make a motion to approve this project element one and deny element two?
Yeah, that would be the second one on the screen, recommending with revised conditions, so.
Yeah, I'm just not convinced that's the best place for such an establishment. I'm pro-business and pro-growth, but in close proximity to the school, I'm just not in favor of, of opening that door. So I would be in favor of approving element one, but denying element two, there's, there's no need to.
And isn't there a vape shop over in the, that strip mall with?
Two brothers, yes.
Well, on the other side of Wesley Chapel, where Starbucks is and A T and T, isn't there a vape store in those four or five stores too?
Yeah, there is a Cure and then 105 Cigar Company, which that's, that's actually in the Sun Valley where the theater is located.
Well, I'm just thinking of the proximity to the school.
Yeah, so those, those are further away from the 500 feet, which were, they, they met the original intent of the code as of 2021.
But now that was increased to 2,000 feet.
Correct.
Right.
And like I said, that's not just from school, that's actually from each other. So.
Okay.
You would, you would be waiving the minimum distance restrictions for not only that institutional use, but also the other like uses.
Right, and is that going to be far enough away from this? The one that's already there?
I mean, it's, it's less, a little bit less than 200 feet away from the one that's at the corner of Old Charlotte Highway and Wesley Chapel Stouts. Like I said, it's just shy of 500 feet away from the school. The one, I guess, added benefit, if you, if you would call it that, talks about shielding from those other uses. You could technically make the argument that it falls behind the existing vape shop that got grandfathered in prior to the 2021 code. And so it wouldn't be seen from Sun Valley.
Yeah, again, my concern has nothing to do with the cigar shop itself, it's just what it, by, by approving this, it does allow for every, all the other uses that's in the same thing. In the future, down the road, that pot, that could, that could be a possibility.
I appreciate your question, I was, I was just verifying something.
Are there any other questions from the board? Would anyone like to entertain a motion?
Well, to keep things going, Madam Chairman, I will make a motion that C Z 2014 dash 00M be approved.
With the current conditions or with modified conditions?
With current condition.
All in favor? All opposed? Can I make another motion since this one didn't pass? I'd like to make a motion that we approve C Z 2014 dash 003M with modification. Approving element number one, denying element number two, the, the presence of a cigar shop in the area.
So just to clarify, before we have a second, that is approving conditions number 2B and 2C, allowing for the use of a drive-through facility?
Yes, allowing for use of the drive-through.
But not the proposed condition for, for the cigar shop use?
Correct.
I just want to clarify that, so yeah, your motion's good.
Okay, thank you, all in favor?
Do we have a second?
Oh, do we have a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Motion approved. Is there any other business at this time? Alright, my motion that we adjourn for the evening, thank you, everybody.